I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Michaela, will you do roll call, please?
Yes. Counselor Thomas, Counselor Hammer.
Here.
Counselor Asbell.
Here.
Counselor Langdon.
Here.
Counselor Mastin.
Here.
Counselor Nicholson.
Here.
And Counselor Geary.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public petition and comments, and we've got a couple that we're going to add here. Bryce, are you here?
I am.
Okay, so Bryce and...
Joseph? Yes.
Both contacted the clerk's office to speak, so we're going to let them have that opportunity here, about four minutes or so to do that, and then after they speak, we'll open it up to anybody else in the audience that would like to have a couple of minutes to speak, and then we'll kind of go from there, okay? So Bryce, so when you come up to the podium, can you please state your name? Do you need address, Eric? No, just clearly state your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Bryce LeBlanc.
Ready?
Go.
Okay. Mayors, council members, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I rise today not to attack any group or deny anyone's right to free expression, but to raise a concern about the city's role in approving public street closures for events that include adult-oriented performances while also welcoming children. At this year's Putnam Pride Fest, there was a drag performance that was open to all ages, and children were present. Whether one views drag as harmless entertainment or as adult-themed performance art, the reality is, is that it often involves sexual innuendo, provocative costuming, and themes that parents would not normally expose their children to. When the city grants a permit to close public streets, it is not a neutral act. It conveys an official endorsement that the programming is suitable for all audiences. Let me give you a personal example. During Pride Fest, a teenager I know who works at a nearby business asked me to stop by, and he told me he was deeply uncomfortable with what he was seeing as he tried to do his job. And when I went to check on him, I saw firsthand the difficulty of being a minor in that environment, caught between doing his work responsibilities and being subjected to entertainment with adult overtones that he never asked to see. This isn't hypothetical. This is a real impact on our youth and on businesses who have no choice but to be present when the street is closed. Now, I want to frame this in two simple categories, what we can all agree on and what we likely will not agree on. We can all agree that we want our city to be a place where people feel safe, where families are welcomed downtown, where businesses can operate without disruption. We want community events to be successful and inclusive, and we all want to live in a city where people can express themselves freely. But what we will likely not agree on is whether drag shows are appropriate for children. That's a debate that will continue in our culture. In some view, it is harmless performance art, while others see it as inherently adult-themed. We will not settle that tonight. But here's where we must focus. The city's role is not to referee personal tastes or beliefs. It is to ensure that when our public streets are closed for an event open to all ages, the programming is broadly appropriate for the general public. I anticipate that you may have some objections. First Amendment and free expression. Drag shows are a form of artistic expression, but the courts have been clear that municipalities may place reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on public events. Miller v. California, Barnes versus Glenn Theater, City of Dallas versus Stangland. Just as city requires concerts to end at a certain hour or fireworks to be kept at a safe distance, it has the authority to require that family-accessible events on public streets remain appropriate for general audiences. Also, an equal treatment or non-discrimination. I want to be clear, this is not about targeting pride. It is about content in a city-sanctioned, family-accessible space. If a business cultural festival or church fair requested a street closure and hosted sexually suggestive performances with minor present, I believe that the council would and should respond in the exact same way. Equal treatment means applying one consistent standard. Also, parental responsibility may be an objection. Some people may say that parents can choose whether or not to attend, but parents can't choose when a main street is shut down, when traffic is diverted, and when their children walk past the event on their way to school or work. Public streets belong to everyone, not just the hosting group. The city's responsibility is to safeguard those spaces for general community use. Indiana law also reflects this concern with Indiana Codes 354933 and 354922. The state has already determined that protecting children from sexual performance is in compelling interest. Another potential objection is the definition of adult content. What makes something adult? Supporters may argue that these drag shows were not sexually explicit, but when typical performances include sexual themes, provocative costumes, or burlesque-style humor, they are not family-friendly in the same way as, say, a Disney show or a puppet theater. And here's the deeper concern. Even the so-called "family-friendly" drag shows can open a door of curiosity to children. A child who sees a performance downtown may later search online for more.
Hey Bryce, we've had our four minutes.
Pardon?
We've hit four minutes.
Oh, okay. Interesting closing, it's not about banning pride or silencing voices. It's about ensuring that when the city grants approval through a street closure, the event meets the same family-appropriate standard that would be expected of any other group that is fair, lawful, and in the best interests of our youth, families, and businesses. I'd be glad to submit this for the rest of your consideration. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to present, do you have a copy for...
I do not have a copy.
Can you provide one to the clerk treasurer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Joseph? We'll need to give him some more time. Hold on, we're going to give you your four minutes here.
Sorry.
Sorry, okay. Just state your name clearly.
My name is Joseph Harris. I've come before this group many times. I have four children. My youngest bear is in a preschool over behind Casey's. My 10-year-old is at TZ and enjoys cheering for Alpha Company tumbling. My 12-year-old goes to Greencastle Middle. She plays middle-school softball and is learning how to hit sliders. My 13-year-old also goes to Greencastle Middle, but he just kind of plays video games. That's his deal. But I have children in this community. They started in Deer Meadow and gone over to Greencastle Middle, and we are two years away from having our first high schooler. God help us. My family lives here, plays here, trick-or-treats here, and I think that's important relevant because as a father, I have two jobs when it comes to my children. One, I need to keep them safe. Two, I need to make sure they grow up to become good people, and I take those jobs seriously. Both my daughters were at Pride this year, and at no point was I worried about their safety or well-being. In fact, they were there with many other kids and many other parents. They were coloring, chalking the ground, getting their faces painted, and I appreciate our neighbors, even the ones I disagree with, and I must respectfully disagree with my neighbor right now. A couple of things that my neighbor said, he says that the reality is that often, the drag shows often involve sexual innuendo, provocative costuming, and themes that parents would not normally expose to children. This is a broad generalization and has nothing to do with what happened at Putnam Pride. I'm not here to talk about other drag events. I'm here to talk about the performance at Greencastle Pride. The performance was explicitly designed to be all-ages and non-sexualized. The performance featured costumes, music, and choreography based on glamour, comedy, and over-the-top theatrics, not sexual content. To conflate an all-ages, family-friendly performance and adult-themed entertainment is to ignore the reality of the event. My neighbor also said that even so-called "family-friendly" drag shows can open a door of curiosity to children. What they find is often explicit, adult-themed drag content. This is speculative. It's a slippery slope argument. Almost any activity, from comedy to fashion to online gaming, can lead a child to explicit content if they search for it without parental guidance. This is a matter for parental supervision and online safety, not a basis for the city to restrict a drag show. Punishing the performance for what a child might search for later is unfair and an impractical standard. In conclusion, my neighbor's argument relies on assumptions about what he thinks broadly about the nature of drag rather than the actual content presented at the Pride Festival. The evidence from the event that it was not sexualized, that many parents with children were present and comfortable, directly refuses the idea that the performance was adult-oriented. Attempting to restrict content that is not legally or morally problematic becomes a smokescreen, a pretext to enforce a content-based ban. I'm deeply invested here. My four children are here, and because they belong here, I take my job as a dad seriously to keep them safe and to make sure they grow up to be good people. I wouldn't compromise on either of those duties for anything. I would never take them somewhere unsafe or somewhere they'd be exposed to adult-themed situations, and that's why I need to reject the broad generalization that my neighbor made of this event. The Putnam Pride Fest, that Putnam Pride was somehow inappropriate. It wasn't. My family's safety and well-being were never in question. There were many parents, many children there. Their well-being was never in question. We had a great time, and I ask you to trust the testimony of parents in the two church groups that were there. This was a safe, family-friendly, community event, and I stand by that.
Do you have a copy for us?
This is a copy of testimony from Golden Church, and we have another one for you.
Okay, perfect. Give those to you.
Was that from the church or just members of the church? Or who are those from?
Here, I can read off who they're from.
There were two churches. Golden was there. Saint Andrews.
Saint Andrews.
Individual.
Yes, so they're individual comments from different folks that were there. Okay. And there's enough for each councilman? Is there anybody that wants to take about two minutes and make any other statements?
No.
So just make sure you state your name.
I don't have any piece of paper.
Okay. We'll let you...
Okay. My name is Doug Yates. I live here outside of Greencastle. I do have a Greencastle address. I kind of disagree a lot about what this young gentleman said. I think there's nobody here that doesn't know what Pride is. I don't believe that there's anybody here that would think that a Pride Festival would not expose young children to what Pride is about. Everybody, the young kids anymore have cellphones, they have everything, they have access. It's just another way of clicking on and finding out something about, and there's really no reason for it. I'm a Christian. The Bible states very clearly, and I'm not going to get into too much of that, but I'm just saying, we should not let the children intermingle. If you want to have that, that's fine, but we should not let the children intermingle with those things. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay?
Anybody else?
My name's Alisa Isaacs Bailey. I live on Bloomington Street, and I'm an associate pastor at Goben United Methodist Church here in Greencastle. I was the person who collected the comments from people from Goben who were attending the event, who were present at the event to witness what was happening, and I'd like to read just an excerpt from that that I wrote myself. Goben Memorial United Methodist Church has a proud tradition of supporting Putnam County Pride Initiative in their endeavors to help all members of our community feel loved and accepted, and this year's Pride event was no exception. When we were told that someone had raised the issue that the music and dance performances at the event were inappropriate for children, those of us who were in attendance were, quite frankly, baffled. It seemed impossible that anyone who had attended and watched the performances could find them vulgar or sexual in any way. In this spirit, we would like to add our comments of support in connection with those of Saint Andrews Episcopal Church, whose booth was located next to ours at the Pride event. As a parent, I have a tendency to be a bit overprotective. In fact, somewhere right now, my teenager is rolling her eyes. My children saw very little TV or movie violence growing up, and they were among the last to be allowed to have cellphones. I am familiar with the type of Pride events that are open only to those 18 years and older, and I'm also very aware of the prejudicial stereotypes that are often put upon people who are trans, either in their daily lives or in drag for entertainment purposes. I can say with integrity that there was nothing sexual about the performances at Putnam County Pride. It was intended as a fun, joyful spectacle, and it was received as such. People were dressed up in over-the-top costumes, makeup, and wigs that are common in drag performance, and the audience had a lot of fun watching and singing along. There was no costume nearly as risque as, say, the cheerleader uniforms that students wear at my high school on game day, and it was no different to the children there than Halloween or other times that people wear costumes and have fun. As a follower of Christ, I see any opportunity to love and include my neighbors as the work that Christ calls me to do in the world. As a member of the Greencastle community for over 20 years, I would like to thank the city council for the many opportunities they provide to our community to celebrate our town and diverse group of citizens who are proud to call it home. Events that attract visitors and make people feel welcome are an important part of continuing to grow as a town, and I hope this council will continue its good work in allowing such opportunities.
Pass that down to somebody that doesn't have one.
Does everybody get one?
My name is Kalen Schrader. I am 19 years old, and I live in Cloverdale. So as you probably might know, that there is a Pride event for... Now, we probably know that... I understand that drag shows are esteemed as entertainment in that it's for adults, but I think it should be kept only for adults because younger kids' minds are a lot more influenceable, and it's the problem that the younger kids are being introduced to more sexually-prone ideas. I don't care if you do it in a club or anything like that. I don't care if it's in like a... Like those have commented, time, place, and matter, because, I mean, whenever you try to label things, what I'm trying to say here is that I don't think it's really right to have kids exposed to this type of stuff, especially at a young age, because drag shows isn't like one of those little parades where it's like Mickey Mouse and all the gang. It's full of sexually provocative costumes. I don't think that's really good in front of young, developing minds. The thing I really want to close with is that I'm a little disappointed that we in America, I don't know, it's just that we allow this to have in front of younger children because, as I just said, their minds are very vulnerable, and whether you like it or not, it doesn't matter, but there's a reason why there are those 18-plus events, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Slayda.
Go ahead.
My name is Haley McGinnis. I wanted to read some brief things. The members of Saint Andrews Episcopal Church weren't able to be here tonight, but they did send some statements. We had some printer issues, and we're not able to get them printed out, but I wanted to read a couple. We had a total of seven people staffing our tent, which was set up in order to show our parish and our denomination's affirmation of LGBTQ persons. We welcome people of all sexualities to be full participants in the life and work of our church. Our tent was at the far end of the block, but from our seats, we could see all of the block dedicated to Pride, including the drag performance. Here are comments from the people who staffed our tent. Participant one, Carrot Hurt Manon. I saw a lip-syncing show that was very family-oriented, people dressed up, nothing children couldn't see. Barbara Prey, parishioner and community member. It was a lovely festival in the square. Children were having a lovely time, and a good time was had by all. Susan Murray. I wasn't there nearly as long as you were, but what I observed were children making chalk drawings in the bounce house, eating snacks, and enjoying picking up the giveaways on the tables. Music kept the afternoon festive, and quite honestly, I glanced at two drag performers that came out, and when I was there, certainly didn't find them offensive. I'm going to skip down to a quote from Reverend Dr. Jennifer Oldstone Moore, rector at Saint Andrews and community member. When the drag performances began, I glanced down the block to see costumes. The participants were dressed in costumes, many with sparkles or themes that matched their songs. It looked like a homespun America's Got Talent or American Idol, where the performers lip-synced in costumes. The MCs simply introduced the performers and encouraged applause. I heard no roushest jokes, and the music was standard loud rock music and country music, the same kind heard at First Fridays or Greencastle music festivals. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Mary Jane Jones, and I didn't expect that I was going to do this. Adults in this room have sexualized drag shows. The kids that were attending Pride Fest saw grownups in costumes, dancing, having a wonderful time, and enjoying life. Just because you believe that drag is sexualized, the kids saw nothing to believe that. They saw that grownups can dress up in costumes, dance, lip-sync, and have a fantastic time, and I think we need to encourage all of our children to be able to do that. Play is important. Thank you.
Anybody else? She's going to go, and then you can go.
I don't know if that mic can get to me, but you probably don't need it. So you have to remember two things. Sorry, my name is Rose Schrader. Two things. There's laws that are protecting this. And number two, these are kids. If this performance was innocent, just adults dressed up, sure, but mommy, what's a drag show? And if mommy or daddy doesn't answer that, where are they going to go? They're going to go to the internet. We are living in a world where we have to protect our children. So if you want to explain that at home, that's one thing. What if a kid is passing by and sees it? And we want to protect our youngins from sexualized content. We can't have that opportunity, though, out in public, being supported by our city. There's no problem in my mind if someone wants to go watch a drag show. I am fine with that. Don't expose the youth in my community to that, please.
Hello, my name is Kalen McGinnis. I spent a lot of time thinking about what I would want to say this evening. I have so much to say, but in a very brief moment, I would just like to take a few moments and just echo some of the words of Jesus. I'd like to call to mind the story of Jesus on a hilltop overlooking Jerusalem and weeping and saying, "Jerusalem, Jerusalem, how I've longed to gather you under my wings," as a hen gathers her chicks, because He was moved with compassion, had a love, a desire for nothing but good to those around Him. I would like to remind people that Jesus, when being betrayed, literally sold to His death, called the person doing that His friend. I would like to remind people that Jesus reached out a hand to those who were literally cast aside by the rest of society. We have the entire story of the Good Samaritan. Reminder that Samaritans were half-breds. They were half-Jews and half-non-Jews. They were not accepted by Jews because they were half-other. They were not accepted by non-Jews because they were half-Jew. And Jesus told a parable about someone who was that kind of a person, the kind of a person that everyone would look down upon and would revile and just think of as disgusting. You know, I think in this day and age, you know, someone like a homeless person or a trans person might fit that bill, and Jesus said, "Use the person like that as an example of how to treat your neighbor and how to know who your neighbor is." And I just want to remind everybody that the only time we saw Jesus act and move in anger was when those who were in positions of religious authority were using their power to keep others out and away from the temple. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Kim Fiddler. I currently serve as an ally on the Spencer Pride Board of Directors and have served on the Putnam Pride Initiative Board. People are acting as though five- and six-year-olds are driving themselves to drag shows. Not the case. So when children are present at a drag show, it's because their parents chose to bring them. We had four drag shows at the Spencer Pride Festival last weekend, and there were children who were getting hugs from drag queens. There was a drag queen storytime. So, you know, if you are a parent that doesn't want that, then don't bring your children. But you don't get to say what my children get to see or my grandchildren. So it's more disturbing to me that we have a pastor and a church who is advocating hate against any group of people, be it drag queens or LGBTQ-plus people. We need to think about that. What would Jesus do? I don't believe that Jesus would say, "These people are bad. If you believe that, then don't bring your children. They're not driving themselves to the events." I hope that people will listen and that pastors will preach love instead of hate to their congregations. I'm deeply disturbed that that could be happening, that preachers are preaching hate rather than love. Hate rather than love. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. You can dispute it all you want. Parents get to decide. If they get to decide about education, they get to decide where their children go. Enough said. Thank you.
You can't remember that there was a speech of a kid...
Excuse me. If... Hey.
Hey. Hey. They've all spoke. You've all got to speak, so...
I was not... My name's Tim Wade. I'm a local community person, and I've been in the county since 2015. And five years ago, I lost my mother, and I had to live most of my life as another person. And I was raised, whoever the pastor was, I was raised stricter than that congregation. I was raised Pentecostal. I'm going straight to hell. No matter what I did, I could be gay, an alcoholic, addicted to sex, and I said it out loud, but, you know, that's how a lot of congregations. And there's a lot of ministers who preach what they want to preach and not what God and Jesus did. Jesus loved... He ate with the sinners. And even Mary Magdalene, you know, the Bible says, "He..." Oh, I'm going to... But Mary Magdalene, and He said to those people, "Who, without sin, cast the first stone?" So anybody and everybody has sinned, no matter what. You can be saying, "Oh, you're sanctified." No. You know, everybody that lives in that, in their own homes, do a lot of things that, "I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to be good." I had so many times I wanted to commit a suicide because I was... That Bible was hitting my head so many times that I felt like I was worthless. And then I started going to Goben, and that church has helped me so much. Even my mom went there and felt loved, and she was the worst critic person in the world, but I'm glad that she got to go there and see how much love they are. I'm sorry you guys might disagree, but everybody disagrees.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay.
My name is Kendra Mills. I am Greencastle-born and raised, kindergarten through my senior year of high school, and now I work for the community school corporations here in the county. And first off, there are so many churches in this county and so many different religions. Your church can't dictate who gets to do what in this county. So I don't feel like that is the point we need to be making right now of whose church gets to say what, because we'd have 200 different laws going on. The point is whether or not that drag show was appropriate. What I saw at that drag show were people covered from their neck to their ankles. There was nothing exposed. You couldn't see anything. If you are worried about you were driving by and your kid is now saying, "Mommy or daddy, what's a drag show?", unfortunately, that's part of having kids, is having to answer questions you don't want to answer. Now, if you don't want to explain what a drag king or queen is, you simply tell them that it's someone who wears a costume and dances and lip-syncs. That's it. They know what that is, and if they Google it later while you're not around, you should be watching their internet privileges better. I see children every day in a high school wearing more risque things than I saw those drag kings and queens wearing. These things our cheerleaders wear cover less than what those drag kings and queens were wearing. I see 10- and 11-year-olds in dance classes wearing more revealing outfits, dancing more sexually than I saw those drag kings and queens dancing. And I apologize that you had someone from your congregation who felt like they were forced to watch something that made them uncomfortable, but I'm also kind of curious where they were that they had to see it, because I was all over that block, and unless you were standing on your tiptoes and looking... And unless you were standing on your tiptoes and looking, there were not very many places within businesses that you could see it from the crowd that was standing around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. So we will not have any more comments from the audience. City Council, anybody have any comment? Question? Okay. So the next steps is we will take all this under advisement. Actually, prior to COVID, the city was working on, right now, we have guidelines, but they're very limited on street closures, parades, public gatherings, everything. We have guidelines, but we do know that they need to be revised and updated and looked at. So we are going to make that a priority here at City of Greencastle. Now, don't take that comment that we are not going to allow anything, but because every one of us at this table has raised our right hand and said we will honor the Constitution of the United States and the state of Indiana. So this is what it's going to consist of, okay? We will have it reviewed by our council. Our city attorney is going to start it. And I believe we will also go out to a third-party attorney that is an expert in constitutional law, because we are not going to mess this up. Because everybody in the city, we are a welcoming community that everybody needs to be able to have fun in our city. We never want to get to the event or the point to where we cannot have First Fridays anymore, Halloween events, Pride events, all the events. So we are going to take a serious look at this. And we'll be back here probably the beginning of '26, because it's not, nothing that we're just going to be able to hammer out this week or next. But we will be back in '26 with guidelines that the council will take a look at and recommendations on how we will begin to handle street closures. So unless anybody else has anything, I will be glad to move on to special requests. So.
I'd just like to say, we're going, we will look at time, place, and manner. That's going to be our main focus. That is what the Supreme Court has said. It is not content. We just, in the last, I think, two council meetings, or maybe it was the one before that, we just made changes to our zoning ordinance because we had some content-based language regarding signs. And signs have very similar rules that the Supreme Court has laid down, that you can legislate time, place, manner, not content. If you have to read a sign to decide whether or not it's legal, then it's probably not going to pass the constitutional strict scrutiny, your rule. And so we will be looking at those sorts of issues, not content.
But I appreciate you all coming. This is a great process that we have, that everybody can come and speak openly about your concerns here in the community. So thank you all for coming. You are all welcome to stay as we go through the rest of our city business, or you, you know, can be dismissed. So, but I do appreciate you all coming. And I should have laid some cards out, but if anybody wants to email any additional comments or thoughts to my office, you can find it on the website, Ldunbar@cityofgreencastle.com. But thank you for all coming and expressing your opinions and concerns.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next item on the business is special request. And the first one is street closure request for Main Street Greencastle Trick-or-Treat on the Square.
Good evening, Melanie Welker. Good to see everyone. So on behalf of Kate Knoll this evening, I'm presenting the special event, "Street Closure Request" for the Main Street Greencastle Trick-or-Treat on the Square. So this will be Friday, October 31st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We are asking for the streets to be closed from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. From Indiana Street, or Indiana Street from Washington to Franklin, Franklin from Jackson to Indiana. And this includes the Franklin-Indiana intersection. North and east sides of Square will have activities, but also will have procedures in place for safeties of kids and families. Businesses will have candy at storefronts. Additional nonprofits and groups will have activities. Candy and vendor spots on the streets. M2 will have activities planned. Businesses on the west side have agreed to participate. So Kate will be reaching out to Police Chief Jones to ask for some guys over there, kind of directing traffic and so forth, to keep everybody safe crossing.
So they'll be, they'll be able to cross it?
Yes.
At Jackson and Franklin?
By the old banner graphics, shoeies, yes. Uh-huh. And this will be in collaboration with the Fire Department and the library, as both of them will be having some activities too. So. Does anybody have any questions or concerns, comments?
I thought that we used to close even Indiana Street down to Walnut, or maybe past Walnut to the fire station. But we haven't in the past? Or we aren't this year?
Rob might be able to help with that, because this is her street closure. With law enforcement? I mean.
I think just to be safe, you might want to extend it down there so we-
Okay.
I mean, we've got plenty of merchants in that block.
Yes.
Yeah, both sides of the street.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
So, all right.
Yeah.
Indiana Street from Poplar? Would that be right? Poplar to Franklin? Are you guys doing trick-or-treating like we've? Okay, so we will need to go all the way to- Okay.
We'll have to leave the US 231. But there is, there's walk signals there. Maybe the police can guard that intersection as well.
Yes.
Because there'd be a lot of kids crossing. Maybe not necessarily always with the walk sign. So I would move to, for adoption of this with the change, Indiana Street would be closed from Poplar to Franklin.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the Phi Kappa Psi fraternity. And I think you've got a couple of social events coming up, right?
Hello, so we are looking to get a noise ordinance for two events we have coming up. One, we will be having a band play, which is the November 14th to November 15th, 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And then the other, we will just be having speakers outside, which is November 8th to November 9th, 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. We have had these signed by deposit safety officers with the stipulation that if they receive calls about noise, they can still shut the party down. And yeah.
So the 14th is a, the 14th, 15th is a band? The 8th and 9th is not a band?
Yes, just speakers outside.
Speakers, music being played over. Yeah, okay.
I will entertain a motion for-
Is Mona Bell the 15th?
Yes. That's what that's for.
So we got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Here's a piece of paper you need.
I just happened to notice that these forms are on a really old.
Yeah, we know. We know. We're not sure where they-
Really old.
We don't know where they dug this up at.
Do I have a file in the House?
Oh, there we go. Maybe we need to supply them with a new supply that, with a clerk treasurer that's not been 20 years since I've been in office.
That's okay. I'll get them an updated one. Yeah, that was several clerk treasurers ago. Okay, thank you very much.
I just had to look down and see that.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is department reports. I think we have all, pretty much most of our departments said. The reports were in the packets. Does anybody have any questions or anything they want to ask for department heads?
I do have a comment. I don't have a question, but Jason? You guys do a phenomenal job out at the sports park. It looks so nice. Okay.
I thought Jason did all of it.
He tries.
He can relate to himself.
Anybody else? Rob, do you want to make a plug for your event that's coming up this Saturday? If you want.
Here's one.
Here's one. We have a handful laying around.
Yeah. So Saturday, we're having our annual open house at the Fire Department. Last year, we decided to include some of the other public safety agencies, so DNR, CERT, the Sheriff's Department. I think GPD is going to be there. So we'll have, and the Putnam County EMS. So they'll all be there, come out and see our new inflatable safety house that we purchased this year. The old one was kind of, kind of in bad shape, so we purchased a new one. So we had that out at TZ today, and we'll have it out again Saturday. And we're going to do some live demonstrations, and we'll have free food and face painting and everything else. So, you know, bring your kids out or come out and get something to eat and hang out at the Fire Department for a while. It's from 8:00 to noon on Saturday. So, thank you.
How long does it take to blow the thing up when you guys just hit your shift?
Honestly, so I've, yeah, it has a fan that blows it up. And I've not seen it actually in person yet. We've used it a couple of times, but I've not been there when they've used it. So, yeah. It's on our Facebook page, if you want to check it out.
All right.
I think, I think you can get breakfast and lunch, right?
Yes, breakfast tacos from the list, and then we'll have hamburgers and hot dogs from the Fire Department.
Good.
Okay, anything else? Okay.
Chris has Drug Takeback Day.
Drug Takeback Day. Chris, when is that? Okay. Thank you. Okay, department heads, you're free to go. Thank you. Okay. Mayor's report. We're kind of winding down on construction. I think since our last meeting, we've got some lines painted on Franklin Street, or which I think have been a great addition. I think, I think they're probably doing what we were hoping they were going to do, is kind of slow people down. So, yeah, happy with that. Our street department, I think in the reports, I hope in the, that they talked about how many feet of stops and crosswalks that they've put in over the last few weeks. They will be starting leaf pickup here at the end of the month. And that will run through till Thanksgiving, the week before Thanksgiving.
Before or after?
I think it's before Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving's kind of late this year, isn't it?
It is kind of late, so. Which is probably good, because there's still a lot of leaves on the trees right now, so. But they'll be out, and they will do pickups in your neighborhood based on your trash routes.
Hopefully. Maybe sooner.
Maybe sooner. The, really, the only construction that we have left in the city is down on Washington Street. It is scheduled to have the road and the sidewalks all put in and opened up by the end of October. They'll still be up there, out there, you know, putting sod down and things like that and cleaning up. But hopefully, the road will be back open here by the end of the month. And I think that will close out all of our construction. And like I said, we're starting now to work on construction for next year. And lots of things coming up around Greencastle here in '26. So there'll be more to come with that. But that's pretty much I have, unless anybody has any specific questions for me at this time? Sure.
I noticed that they've done a really good job on construction on sidewalks. I'm assuming that you have some warnings for some of the sidewalks. I noticed personally, there's been a lot of construction, that under the sidewalks that were poured were completely vacant of dirt, void of dirt underneath a lot of the sidewalk. When they pushed that dirt back in, there could be a lot of voids. When they pushed a lot of that dirt, filled a lot of the holes, like it's basically, I think, the water or something along in there. And that they were undermining a lot. That's really hard to fix. Concrete can crack later on in time. I'm assuming there is some warning coming with those, those start cracking. I don't see, really see how they really fixed the undermining. I thought they were going to have to tear it out before.
Well, those sidewalks were done by the NDOT, so the state of Indiana. And so, you know, if they start falling apart, we'll be reaching out to them. But it was an NDOT project, so. Yeah, no.
And if you see issues-
I don't know, the State Department.
Yeah, no, it was all done by the state of Indiana.
If you see issues, tell us right away.
Right away, if all of a sudden you see that-
Let us know, we can let them know. But, but they came back after this last, the first, the first year of it, this is year three, the first year, and redid, had to redo some of the sidewalks.
And then they redid a bunch downtown. And then they re-tore them out again and had to put them back a different way. So, yeah, so. One thing I didn't say is the 20th of October, I will be meeting with Andrew, myself, our city engineer, and Lori, our city attorney. We're going to have a nice meeting with NDOT to discuss repayment for the damage that has been done to our roads. And so we have, they've all been analyzed by our city engineer, and he has a report. So we're going to see. That will consist of Jackson Street, the block there on Walnut Street, Madison Street. We also told them we had concerns for some spots on Franklin Street where the heavy dump trucks came in and used those side streets for construction on US 231. So we'll see where we go with them and in November, hopefully, report that we're going to get some money to repair a lot of damage. We had a couple spots in the road where the roads were rated a seven at our last Pazer rating, which was done in October of 2024. And when they went back to review them, they were down to a two. So they took a lot of abuse in the last couple months with all the big trucks running through there on that. So we will fight to get what we think we'd need to fix those roads back to better condition. So anyways.
The last traffic count I saw was like 12,180 or something on Jackson Street. Every one of those had to go this way or that.
Yep. And, and I wish-
They don't usually get.
Yeah, and I wish we could also get some money for the areas that they also did a lot of damage, like College, Franklin, and the other side of Frasier Street. So, but that's not how it works. But we are at least going to see what we can get done on Jackson. And it will be Jackson all the way from Veterans Highway, so it's the whole strip. Kayla?
It's been a busy month with salary ordinance, budgets, a lot of personnel items, getting ready for open enrollment. Our open enrollment for the city will be October 15th through November 14th. So getting ready for that. We're offering some new things to our employees this year, so we are extremely excited about that. And I think nothing says we're busier in October than having an event every weekend. So the fun stuff. Rob already mentioned the open house this Saturday. Next Saturday, October 18th, is our favorite day, Heavy Trash Day, from 8:00 to noon out at Republic. Utility trash customers can bring their trash to drop off for free. We love this day. Everybody's in a great mood and loves to get rid of their trash to keep the City of Greencastle looking beautiful. The Yard Waste Site will also be open from 9:15 to noon on that day. No charge to utility, Greencastle utility trash customers at the Yard Waste Site either. I believe, I think Jason left, but Boo Bash is at the park Friday, October 17th. And Chris mentioned Drug Take Back Day. So I think that covers every weekend in October. Fun events. Welcome to fall.
I like summer. My hands are cold.
Anything else, Michaela?
I don't think so.
Okay. Counselor report. So I don't know which side I blast, but I'll start over here with Mark, I guess.
Okay. Well, just really good to see construction coming to an end, hopefully by the end of the month. But I just wanted to acknowledge that it used to be that in the past, we would do our street resurfacing about this time of year, and that was, that has been done for quite a while now. So kudos for you, and you're getting ready for, you've already got a plan for next year. So probably doing some community crossing grant applications and what have you. So, well, we, we hate to have streets shut down and have to deal with construction, but in the long run, it's really worth it. So thanks for getting what you've gotten done so far this year.
Thank you.
I just want to, I think I said it last month, but thank the city again for putting in those really beautiful bike lanes and the crossing areas on the sidewalks. They look beautiful, and I feel like it's really much safer for bikes to travel down the roads. It looks great. Good job. Also, with Heavy Trash Day, can you walk us through, like, what a person does when they get there? Because I've had people asking me, like, is there, are there going to be people there to help unload?
We will have one or two, hopefully two people there, helping to unload if somebody is not physically able to. But we really, it helps us out a ton if people are able to unload their own trash. Usually, the line starts at seven, 7:15 in the morning at Republic, so there will be a long line on that road. So please, we ask everybody to use caution and patience. When they pull up, Melanie and I will be there. We make sure that they are on our trash utility list, mark them off, and then we'll direct them back. There'll be an area first that they'll come across to get rid of recyclables or electronics. We get a lot of TVs, treadmills, things like that.
Tires.
Tires, yep. You can bring tires as well. And then after those specific items, you'll follow the road on back to the big white barn, and we ask that people unload their own trash and then pull back around to exit.
It's pretty easy.
Yeah, they'll be, we'll be out there walking around. We'll help direct. Come as many times as you want. You can have as many loads.
You're not limited to one.
Yes, yes. There's no limit. So get there early and come back all day long.
Vote early, vote often.
Yes, utility trash customers.
Yes.
Greencastle utility trash customers.
They give coffee and donuts and stuff too, so everybody can just kind of hang around.
If you drop it off.
That's part of your heavy trash. Michaela and Melanie would be most grateful.
Melanie prefers a Diet Coke. Michaela likes her coffee.
And I can speak from experience. Last year, I had a water softener, which somehow I got it in the truck, but I wasn't getting it out. Somebody came over and just gave, I think, a big old bear hug and disposed of it.
We do, we do have, we do have cities, we do have city staff out there that help. And we also, they, they have all the stuff separated, so we are not putting things, like metal goes to metal, so we are very conscious of what we're throwing into the landfill and what goes in the right bin. Like TVs go in one and tires go in another. So everything's separated, and it's a great event, so.
Does it include things like batteries and?
No.
I didn't think it did.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's tox away day. Yeah.
Yeah, not batteries.
That's in the spring, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is a lot of fun.
Come hang out with us if you want.
Yeah.
Okay. Stacy?
Our fourth annual Community Connect event is coming up November 1st. It'll be at Greencastle Christian Church. Every year, it gets bigger. It's from 10 until 2. It's for those in need in our community to get information, to get resources. It's a wonderful program. Giving Tree will be there for families to sign up. Center Point, people that need heat assistance. Head Start Library, Area 30, they give away clothing. They give away brand-new underwear and socks, and it's just a wonderful community event. If anyone is interested in volunteering, many of the people at this table have already signed up, but please let me know. There's going to be advertising in the paper. But, yeah, November 1st, from 10 until 2, and just a great, great event for Putnam County.
And see, Michaela, you got every week, weekend in October.
Plus.
Now we got one, now we got the first one in November coming.
I put it on the October calendar and the November side. That's it for me. Thanks, Stacy.
Well, I think the crosswalks are great. I think Almond Pond Road is great. I think getting out to the market for repaving early, anytime you give contractors lead time, you're going to get a better bid, almost variably. So I just think that, all I can say is just well done to everybody who's involved. But I really like the crosswalks.
Grady Brothers did a great job on the crosswalks this year.
They did a really good job.
Tina?
I don't have anything. I just send my kudos to Jason.
Wednesday, the 29th of October, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, will be the Putnam County Childcare Summit at the YMCA. Want to make sure everyone feels welcome. It's, it's open to community members, families, childcare providers, employers, and policymakers at any level. A lot of really interesting data that's going to be revealed, some I haven't seen yet, involving the potential lost income and revenue to the city and county by parents not working. And I, I don't know those numbers yet, but I think I shared last month about the 609 work-willing families in the county, and I don't have the number in front of me for how many of those were in Greencastle. But all are welcome. Working on having childcare available at the childcare summit. No details yet. But the lie is open to that discussion, so we're trying to figure out if that's possible or not. So nothing to confirm there, but please do come, 5:30, 7:00. Your kids are welcome to be there if you feel comfortable having your kids there. That's it.
Okay. Next item is approval of minutes. We have three sets there. So I think we could either do them individually or all one sweeping, however you want to do it.
I had a couple of, couple of changes. On the September 11th minutes in Park 8A, bank shot basketball, three, third lineup from the bottom, it says in December of '25, which hasn't yet arrived, so I think it's going to be December of '24.
Yep, thank you. We'll make that correction.
And then on the minutes of September 22nd, it's Mayor Dunbar called the meeting to order, Clerk Treasurer Michaela Johnson called the roll. Nothing about who was present.
And I should have listened, who, thank you.
I think we were all present, but I'm not positive.
I think we were. Because it was a budget meeting, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes, everybody was present.
With those two changes, I would move for adoption of all three sets of minutes.
Thanks, Mark.
Tina's got it. We have a motion and second for all three dates with the changes made. I know what happens doing minutes before. All of a sudden, you're sitting there and doing, and somebody walks in and, or you get a phone call, and then you're like, oh, okay.
On to item B.
So it happens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay. Approval of claims. Mark?
Okay, so we've got regular payables of $106,169.85, direct payables of $900,267.84, payroll of $647,970.24, and pensions of $21,198.07, for a grand total of $1,675,066, even. So on the regular payables, the $106,000 figure, we've got annual ladder tests for $1,535 to American Test Center for the fire department. I bought a Dell laptop for $1,382 from CDW for the fire department. Clark Truck Equipment, we bought a Ford F-250 dump truck with strobe lights in the grille on the cabin, on the rear corner post with an eight-foot-six-inch snowplow with halogen lights for $50,339. We've got Eco Landscape for downtown planters and City Hall for flowers and fertilizer for $5,100. Enos Flint for $57,1715. Here's we go. Here's the 41 crosswalks and 43 stop blocks, bars for the city streets. Six police vehicle service and hinder shots for $5,186. We rented a hatching machine for not quite, I think, a little over two weeks for $8,681.3. Well worth it, I'm sure. About 29 and a half tons of street material, milestone for $2,334. Dash camera for the fire department for $563.47. And I think that's about it, the highlights of that, those claims. Again, that was $106,169.85. On the big one, which is always big, the direct payables for over $900,000. Got our usual utility bills, Republic trash and stuff like that. We have also $8,100 to AM Structure Point for June, July, and August for the comprehensive plan update. We've got our annual, or our monthly, $20,272.70 to BB Commercial Leasing for the removal of the pool filter system, monthly lease payment. Excuse me. Brad Howell, which is an automobile dealership, bought an F-2, F-550 for the Public Works Department, so another truck there, for $57,272.50. Washington Street Reconstruction for August, Decalumet for $212,667.52. Had a lot of card services. I totaled up, there's about $1,500 for training included on various charge cards there. Engineering Service to Fishbeck for $11,887.5 for the month of August. We had Grady Brothers, mentioned them earlier, street resurfacing from August 1st to 9:15, so for two and a, for a month and a half of the $408,254. A lot of these with those types of things had some retainage, either 5% or 10% taken off. North Salem State Bank, we had our semi-annual police car lease payment, I think semi-annual.
Mm-hmm.
And my calculation is that it's four and a quarter percent, but I don't know if that's correct or not. We had, pardon me?
Pretty close.
Pretty close, okay. $61,446.48 to SLB Pipe for Todson Drive Sewer Project. That should be winding down, I'm sure. And then Thrive West Central, we paid $2,500 for Safe Streets for All, and $5,000 for Sidewalk Inventory Project for a total of $7,500. So with those explanations, if there's any questions, I'll entertain, but.
Not this month.
Oh, you can vote this month.
Must be nice.
So we got, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody has to abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Old Business, which we have quite a bit because we have some ordinances that we need to work through here. These are all second reading, and the first one is Ordinance 2025-8, an ordinance amending the text of the City of Greencastle, Indiana zoning ordinance, second reading. We just need to read it by title only. Does anyone have any questions? Because Blaine is here to answer anything that you might have to ask on that.
No changes since first reading?
No changes since first reading.
Review, like, proposal A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
I think we ended up with four technically, but.
Cliff notes.
So really, the bulk of the amendments here, it's that category as well as making mailings for public notices and more flexible, where we aren't tying people into just certificate of mailing. Certified mail is a higher standard, so we have that as well. But going through plan commission and having discussions of, you know, what's, what's the best arrangement to protect historical commercial buildings? And, you know, when we think of small business owners, entrepreneurs versus big business, I think that was kind of the bulk of the conversation of how to lay things out. So whether we were going to do broadly across central business district to allow, either by right or by special exception, ultimately, the combined kind of hybrid arrangement would be where we have kind of a core exclusion area within the main courthouse square, as well as our corridors along Washington Street and Jackson Street within the district. And that seemed the most reasonable based on the type of buildings in those areas, maybe within the secondary areas that have some of those, but not to such an extent. The special exception process gives it that secondary review process where we can fine tune if there are issues identified. So overall, I think it's a pretty good arrangement.
Any questions? For Blaine?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-8, an ordinance amending the text of the City of Greencastle, Indiana zoning.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have a paperclip. I'll be sending around just the signature copy, so you don't lose it.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Ordinance 2025-9, ordinance for appropriation and tax rates. So these have been posted, and we, we talked about them last month, and does anybody, and nothing has changed on these.
There you go.
So, does anybody have any questions about the budget or, you know, anything there? When the signature copies go around, please sign it exactly as it appears next to your name, and please mark with whether, you know, an A and A or abstained, okay? And then we'll get this wrapped up tomorrow with DLGF. So I will entertain a motion on Ordinance 2025-9.
I move for adoption of Ordinance 2025-9 on second reading.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Sign it exactly as our name appears?
Yes, please. The next one is Ordinance 2025-10, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Greencastle, Indiana, establishing wages, salaries, and benefits for 2026. I believe the only thing that changed that was we did change it to 27 weeks, correct?
Yes, 27 bi-weekly pays because the first pay in 2027 would fall on the first, Friday the first, and the bank won't accept it on the first, so we would have to move that one forward, which would put us into 27 pays in 2026. Thanks for.
So it was either this year or next year, we're going to have 27 pays?
Yes.
So what's going to be next year?
It's going to be this year.
I mean, this, 2026.
This year, upcoming, yes.
Upcoming this year, 2026. So we will have that. If we run into the issue where we need to make any additional appropriations because of the extra two weeks of pay, then we will do so. The salary ordinance reflects everybody's pay correctly because it is given by bi-weeklies and hourly rates, so that they are correct.
Hourly rates wouldn't be affected, but the salary people would be affected and had been changed.
Yes, but based on the, the salaries. But, but, but their bi-weekly rates are what their bi-weekly rates are.
Right, okay.
Let me sign this real quick.
Okay, well, I will move for adoption of Ordinance 2025-10 on, on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstain? Let's see, today's what, the ninth?
Yes. Same thing, I will be sending around only the signature copy, or the signature-
Oh, you spelled your name right.
Yes.
Okay, the next ordinance that we have is Ordinance 2025-11, an ordinance eliminating the special non-reverting fund for the youth basketball program. I'll let Michaela catch up. Do you want to talk about that ordinance? We'll let her catch up. But basically, I'll start, and then you can clarify it. The Parks Department used to have a youth basketball program that they are no longer having because we have the YMCA. And it's in the contract with the YMCA that they will provide youth basketball. We will not compete against them, so they're, they're taking care of that. So, we have that fund that has money in it and all that, and so, Michaela will pick it up from there.
Yep, so, since, since we're no longer operating the basketball program, there's no need to have the fund, so the ordinance is just to eliminate the fund and so approve to get rid of that and to transfer the balance of that fund so that we can use the remaining balance.
Is it going into park non-reverting?
It's going into park operating.
Operating fund, general fund. About how much, do you recall?
I want to, I would have to verify that.
Don't worry about it.
It's not much.
Not much, okay.
The only revenue that flowed into that was from, from the fees for the kids.
Sponsorships.
Yes, yeah, so each season, the Parks Program did a great job of getting sponsorships from local organizations and businesses, and then each team would have a fee as well, which would then go towards t-shirt expenses, plaque expenses, medals, referees, time clockkeepers. I played basketball. Clockkeepers.
Payment, payment for the custodians at the gym to let them in and things like that.
Yeah.
So, money's-
Flip the floors at halftime.
So, the, the Park Board asked that the money that is spent on that, or that we have left over, would be, then be allowed to be spent on the ice skating rink that's coming to the park this winter.
Oh, okay.
So, it's still for a program that's happening in the park.
Well, I wouldn't make the motion that we adopt Ordinance 2025-11 on first reading.
I second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
It was a good ordinance. It was, you know, I remember doing it, and-
Oh.
Oh, I thought you'd been 1982. Well, thank you.
As opposed to all the other ones.
So, that concludes the business of the City of Greencastle, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I did have one question. Going back to the salary ordinance, when will we see the ones for elected officials?
Well, it's all included.
It's included in there?
Yes.
Didn't pay attention. Yeah. In the past, we've always done them as two separate, that's why.
We didn't last year.
We didn't last year. You know, I've been around for a while, so.
Yeah, we switched it last year. As a prior auditor, I like this layout a lot better because when they come to audit, it makes it very simple, very clear and clean-cut, no questions.
I'll try not to remember, remember that next year and not ask.
So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, so Tina, she raised her hand first, and I'll make a second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Haven't signed the last one yet. I want to give it back to you.